Before we get started, I'd like to call for a motion to go out of closed session.
So moved.
Deacon.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are out of closed session. I would like to call this regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. It is Tuesday, July 9th, at a little after 5:30 PM. The first on the agenda is our invocation from Seagate Baptist Church Reverend Steve Smith.
Our Heavenly Father, I thank you for the ones that have come tonight to listen to the business and the agenda tonight of the board. Lord, I ask that as we are here that you keep us in your realm. Lord, I ask that you give us the revelation to listen and to learn. And Lord, I ask that as we go home from here that you protect us all of the way home. And Lord, I ask all things through your son's name, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. You all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Posting of Colors. My pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. That'll bring the sun out for us tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, I am Jackie Booth, the Director of Arts Education for New Hanover County Schools, and our singer tonight is from Ashley High School, and I'm going to let her introduce herself and tell you what grade she is in.
I'm Asal Laden, and I am a rising senior at Ashley High School.
Thank you so much.
Reverend Smith, would you like to tell us a little bit about your church? Thank you very much for giving the invocation. Would you like to talk about your, about Seagate? It's a Seagate Baptist.
I'm the pastor at Seagate Baptist Church. I'm also the administrator for the North Carolina Baptist Rebuild in Wilmington, North Carolina. We are presently rebuilding 2,500 homes in the community. And so, I'm a full-time pastor and a full-time builder, and I'm glad to be here tonight in front of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a beautiful rendition of the National Anthem. It gave me chills. I'd like to call for approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions?
One change. Appendix, please remove Appendix A. That should be on the personnel, on the regular personnel agenda, not separate. And it's there. It's not an administrative position.
Where is it?
Appendix A. Under the administrative recommendation.
Okay.
It's a regular personnel recommendation.
Okay. So there is no admin?
No.
Any other changes, additions, or deletions? Hearing none. Is there a move to approve the agenda as?
So moved.
Second?
Deacon.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes, special, do you want to, I guess there's just one, special minutes from June 4th, June 11th, and June 27th, 2019.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Item number four, recognition of achievement. Item number A, community partnership Wilmington Police Department. Ms. Valita Quatabom.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will start our recognitions by highlighting one of our excellent community partnerships with the City of Wilmington's Police Department, and it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce our speaker, Mrs. Linda Raleigh Thompson, who is the Public Affairs Officer. And Mrs. Thompson will share with us how the Police Department supports our students in our schools through the Port City Supergirls Program. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Valita. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight. I am very excited because a couple of years ago, the Police Department embarked on an exciting endeavor, and that was to create a program that we believe has made some tremendous strides in our community with our young girls. What is a Supergirl? Well, if you look at television, you'll know she's a superhero. And I happen to believe that every woman has a little bit of superhero on the inside of her. And so, our program encourages girls 12 to 18 years of age that they can do anything they can imagine doing if they put their mind to it. Anything positive, anything successful, they can do it. This program was brought about as a gang intervention program in our community, and we are excited about the results that have happened. Little bit of background helps us to know that women comprise a large portion of individuals who are in our prisons. Female prison population stands nearly eight times that of the population count back in 1980. More than 60% of women who are in our state prisons have children under the age of 18. And many of those young people are females who are right here in our community. 2014, the U.S., there were 1.2 million women under the supervision of the criminal justice system. Throughout New Hanover County, we have found that we were running into more and more young ladies who were considering or contemplating joining gangs. And the Police Department, the Police Department felt it was important to find an initiative that would attract those young ladies and get them involved in some positive programming. So, we started in January of 2016, Port City Supergirls. And this program again targets girls 12 to 18 years of age around our community, and we've also had some from Brunswick and Pender County to have visited our program with excitement because of the types of activities that we give them. How do we do it? We simply create innovative, hands-on activities for our girls. We run camps, academies. We take them on field trips. We engage them with law enforcement officers. Positive conversations and dialogues are had, and we also engage their parents so that they become familiar with the positive life choice initiatives that we are encouraging them to be a part of. In April of 2016, we took some girls on our 5K Challenge to support Step Up for Soldiers. And then, we began a number of academies. The Governor's Office heard about our Port City Supergirls Initiative. They gave us a grant more than two years ago for $21,000 to enlist more than 100 girls in our community to allow them to be a part of our academy. So, up at Camp Kirkwood, which is in Waltham, North Carolina, we've been taking girls from our county, spending one week with them during spring break, and imagine taking 100 girls. Just imagine. 100 girls at an academy. And we had an absolutely wonderful time. In 2017, we assumed funding. The Wilmington Police Department out of our general fund sets aside $15,000 a year to support our program, and we're very excited about that. If you can see here, we hire UNCW interns. That's a partnership we work with to help us to plan the academy. And of course, we work with the YMCA's Camp Kirkwood and a number of other partners throughout New Hanover County such as General Electric. Your very own staff members have been a part of our project and many other initiatives. We're excited about what Port City Supergirls is doing right here in New Hanover County. We're excited about the young lives that we're touching and impacting, and my prayer is that we will hopefully turn a young lady away from gang activity, criminal activity, and allow her to make positive choices and to someday become chairman of the New Hanover County School Board. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
So, how does, how does someone find your program?
They can simply contact the Wilmington Police Department, the Public Affairs Office, and they can sign up for any of our initiatives. My number and information is here on this slide presentation, but they can certainly call the Wilmington Police Department and sign up through the Public Affairs Office.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Our next item is not on your agenda, but the district wants to recognize our board chairperson. Mrs. Lisa Eastep has been named to North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Committee of Practitioners, and she will represent the southeast region. So, would you please join me in congratulating our chairperson on that? We're very proud of that. Congratulations, Mrs. Eastep. Next, this is very exciting. At this time, we are proud to recognize the New Hanover High School Wildcats baseball team. They are our state champions. They won the 2019 Division IIIA State Championship. So, at this time, I will ask Coach Richard Foy, the assistant coaches, Principal Dr. Rob Morgan, our Athletic Director Keith Moore, and of course, our superstar Wildcats to please come forward. Ms. Eastep, we have a special plaque that our board chair will present to you.
Thank you. As a footnote, as they take their seats, two of their players, Blake Walston and Kyle Smith, were drafted to play in the Major League, the Arizona Diamondbacks. So, this is such an incredible team we're looking at. Congratulations again, gentlemen. We have another state champion winner. She could not be with us tonight, but New Hanover County Schools is very proud to celebrate Laney High School's Natalie Tyner. Natalie won the 3,200 meter run at the 2019 4A State Championship in girls track and field, and we would like to congratulate Natalie. Next, we have another very exciting recognition. Recently, here in Wilmington, the Nick Cannon Foundation hosted what he called America's Team Mogul Summit, and that's a student business plan competition. And New Hanover County Schools is very excited because we have several of our students who took top honors in that competition. This is a competition to connect our students with career opportunities and get them involved in steer STEM, high-demand STEM careers. So, we will recognize these future business leaders at this time. The top winner of the Nick Cannon contest is Shamika Richardson from New Hanover High School. Is she here? Ms. Richardson is a recent graduate. She won the top prize for the competition. Her business plan was called Train Life Saving Systems, and it's a plan for a system to provide trauma kits with medical supplies to help people stay alive during emergencies. And she won $3,500 for that brilliant idea. And from Wilmington Early College, we had two more winners, Sebastian King and Timothy Niven. If you're here, would you please come forward? These two bright scholars are in second place for their business plan, and it's called Simple Wallets. And their plan would create built-in GPS tracking systems that would connect to an app so that the services are user-friendly. These are students, and they're already coming up with what sounds like multimillion-dollar business plans. I think it's amazing. Congratulations, gentlemen. And from Isaac Bear, we had another winner of the Nick Cannon contest, Anya Cox. Is Anya here? Anya's business plan is called Athena's USB, and it would sell, her company would sell flash drives to nonprofit organizations that help support education to refugees. And she won third place in the competition, so I think New Hanover County Schools kind of swept this competition. Congratulations. Our next award, the social studies people in the room will like this. It's an award for a program called National History Day, and this year's theme was Triumph and Tragedy in History. Over 500 students competed on the state level. We had a winner who won top awards. If Maya Roseborough is here, would you please come forward, Ms. Roseborough? Now, let me tell you of what this beautiful young lady did. She created a website, and she won an award for it. It's called Triumph and Tragedy of the 1918 Influenza Pandemic in the United States. That's amazing. She is a rising seventh grader at Murray Middle School. If her social studies teacher is here, that is Ms. Denise Summerlin. Ms. Summerlin, would you come forward? And Maya's parents are a family we're very familiar with. Her parents are Mr. Broadus Roseborough, and her mom is our very own Dr. Danielle Roseborough. Would you please stand? Maya, Ms. Summerlin, wow. Congratulations, and thank you so much. We look forward to more great things from you. Next, we'll move over to our CTE program. We had students who were winners in the North Carolina Skills USA Challenge. These career technical education students won top honors at this state contest. So, students, if you are here when I call your name, would you please come forward? From CTECH, Hayya Oday won second place. Is Hayya here? Hayya? Hayya won for the Cosmetology Fantasy Hair and Makeup Design category. Also from CTECH, Shanti Judd won third place in the Cosmetology Skills Showcase. Is Shanti here? Your parents are here. We congratulate you. And CTECH, it's amazing how CTECH is one of our newest schools, and you're already doing such wonderful things. Congratulations. Our next award, we would like to recognize the winners from the North Carolina Science Fair who were nominated to represent the district both nationally and internationally. So, when I call your name, would you please come forward? From Hogarth High School, Uma Lo Valetti. Uma won first place in the Earth and Environmental Science Division and earned the U.S. Army Award for her project. And for the same contest, Myrtle Grove Middle School's Emmy Rose. Is Emmy here? Emmy won first place in the Earth and Environmental Science Junior Division, and she received the Naval Science Award. Congratulations, Emmy. Congratulations to your parents as well. And our final recognition is a national contest, and this was a very big deal. This received publicity across the country. It's called TCS Ignite Innovation Student Challenge. And one of our students, Alexandria Chappell, from Murray Middle School, won the top award for that. Alexandria, if you're here, would you please come forward? So, this brilliant young scientist was awarded the Education Pillar Prize for her project. It's called The Sign Buddy, and she created a cube that translates sign language into spoken English to help people with hearing disabilities. Isn't that amazing? And she also won $7,500 scholarship for that. So, Alexandria, congratulations. Congratulations to your family and to Mr. Sutton and Murray and everyone. We're very proud of you all. And that concludes our recognition. Thank you so much.
That is a long list of winners, and we are very proud of all of you. That's a great job. All right, moving on to item number five, call the audience. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Time does not permit dialogue between the board and the community. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman retains the right to limit discussions on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. The first person on the call the audience list is Clyde Edgerton.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. When I spoke several months ago, in March, I believe, about the 2014-15 Spanish Immersion Enrollment Program at Forest Hills Kindergarten, one of you asked the board slash administrative lawyer to publicly push back against my comments, and the lawyer did for about four minutes. Then, in April, the next month, the school system superintendent in an op-ed admitted a problem in the same first-come, first-served program that the board administrative lawyer had defended the month before. In his op-ed, the superintendent referred to that program as a leaky faucet. Here's a question that the first-come, first-served situation begs, in my view. Does anyone believe the problem now admittedly owned by the superintendent, the leaky faucet Spanish immersion program, is not related to racial discrimination? It turns out that the problem apparently existed for three years, 2013, 2016, rather than one year. I believe this board should aggressively act to help African-American students in next year's fourth, fifth, and sixth grades, students whose recruitment for a beneficial program was actively blocked. They were victims of racial discrimination. They should receive remedy for the wrongs that came to them and have thus far been ignored, apparently, by administrators and the school board. Thank you.
Dante Murphy?
Seven months ago, I came before this board and asked on behalf of the Southern Coalition for equal protections under law that you launch an independent investigation of six cases of racial discrimination, employee intimidation, and child sexual abuse. Not any crimes themselves, but administration mishandling. Instead of investigating, you have started up or have planned to start up several programs that a Star News editorial has called baby steps. You have painted the small porch of a large house with a rotting foundation. You have failed to take actions that would cause child abusers and racists to feel the sting of investigations. In fact, during the last six months, they may well have failed a safety net of inaction. At this point, I don't know what to ask you to do. On last week, you made an announcement that you would do an internal investigation, but an internal investigation at this point is called interference into an SBI investigation. So, I don't know how you are going to do anything now without interfering with what is already being done. What I would ask, my guess is that there will be numerous lawsuits, and what lawyers tend to do, they don't worry about victims. Their job is to give you the best representation, which oftentimes revictimizes victims who have been sexually abused. It is my hope that when that happens, you all do not allow that to happen. I believe every victim that has suffered at the hands of a teacher this system hired needs to be protected from further abuse. Thank you very much.
You have painted the small porch of a large house with a rotting foundation. You have failed to take actions that would cause child abusers and racists to feel the sting of investigations. In fact, during the last six months, they may well have felt a safety net of inaction. At this point, I don't know what to ask you to do. On last week, you made an announcement that you would do an internal investigation. But an internal investigation at this point is called interference into an SBI investigation. So I don't know how you are going to do anything now without interfering with what is already being done. What I would ask, my guess is that there will be numerous lawsuits. And what lawyers tend to do, they don't worry about victims. Their job is to give you the best representation, which oftentimes revictimizes victims who have been sexually abused. It is my hope that when that happens, you all do not allow that to happen. I believe every victim that has suffered at the hands of a teacher this system hired needs to be protected from further abuse. Thank you very much.
Rochella Dombrowski?
Good evening. I have come before you this evening to speak about one of the most successful programs in our schools for attracting, encouraging, and introducing high school students to teaching as a career, the Laney Teacher Cadet Program. It's my understanding by the direction of the superintendent and principal that eighteen-year program at Laney has been eliminated. I do understand that Laney has lost positions due to the high school redistricting that's currently underway. However, I also know that when there is a need in this county, we can find a way to fund it. I've seen this in my thirty-three years as a teacher. Although I just recently retired, July first, there are several teachers that are interested in continuing this program. When I asked about the program, the assistant principal in charge of scheduling told me the numbers were low. Well, that's happened one or two times in eighteen years. And we went out and recruited teachers, counselors, and principals. And we had full classes, up to twenty-one. However, there was no recruiting. And my students that were in the program currently were told that it would not exist next year. And they would be eligible for the board scholarship next year. I fully believe the Teacher Cadet Program is one of the most effective ways that we can grow our own. Right now, there are three to four Laney cadets teaching in New Hanover County. I've gone back and counted. Right now, there are forty in the state that came through our program. I would like to see that the program stay at Laney High School. We had a history of attracting a broad diversity group of students. Many of my minority students are actively engaged in educational fields statewide. And a number of them have won year board scholarships. While I understand the two programs I'm going to mention are funded differently with vocational money, I just want to point out, every day, we send students to work in daycares and restaurants. But I can't get a bus to send my students to a public school, Wrightsboro, Title I. This year, my students donated four thousand hours to Wrightsboro. They taught, they ran small groups, they engaged, and they helped the students. Our partnership with Wrightsboro in eighteen years has added up to seventy-two thousand hours that we donated to that school. I urge you to take action tonight as a board to reinstate the Teacher Cadet Program at Laney for the 2019-2020 school year. Thank you. And I would be happy to help in any way I can.
Thank you for your years of education. In education, sorry, Ms. Dombrowski. Next, Gwendolyn Craig?
Good evening, school board members. You are looking at a twenty-five-year dedicated school bus driver. As of 2017, I was terminated. I was terminated because the decision was made that I put a child off the bus. But that is not true. In light of the situation with the sexual harassment that's been going on in the school system, I wrote Mr. Markley and I asked him if he would reinstate me as a monitor. I don't feel like the justification is right for me. If this person that committed the sexual acts had the opportunity to move from a school to school, I wasn't given that opportunity. Why is it different for me? So I'm asking the board to consider, because of the shortness, to reinstate me as a monitor in the New Hanover County School System. Thank you.
Angela McIntyre?
Good evening to everyone. I come on behalf of stating about our children, buses, school buses. I am a school bus aide for twenty-three and a half years on a bus. I'm also going to elaborate on the redistricting of kids going so far out of their area. I'm also concerned about the children that I walk into school with all these problems and everything that is around. I'm also concerned about our workmanship in New Hanover County School. I would like to see us come together as a whole and not divided because of a race, a color, or anything. Because we are all God's children. And we need to put ourselves as that and forget about all the other things and think about what is very promising, and it's that our children. Our children are supposed to be first, no matter what color they are. They are supposed to be first. Our drivers, our aides, and our teachers, they are very, very, very important in these children's life besides their parents. I'm asking you board members to come together with us and make this a better place for our children. It's not about us. It's about the children. I thank you and may you have a wonderful day.
Rebecca Trammell?
I think the last two speakers pretty much stole my thunder. I'm Rebecca Trammell and I represent Community Conversations. And most of my team is with me tonight. And I just want the people who are on my team, if you would please stand up. These tireless people have been working so hard to see that every school and every child has a chance to be successful in the New Hanover County School System. And I just want to give you guys a round of applause. We are hosting an educator of color dinner party on August twentieth at 6:00 PM at the Bridge Church. And the event is fittingly called Come to the Table because that is exactly what we are trying to do. We are inviting administrators, teachers, and teachers assistants to come together, first of all, because we want to celebrate and acknowledge the accomplishments and the amazing work that they do with our children every day. The other reason why we're coming together is because we believe that as we go into this next season of change and wonderful change, we want to see these teachers begin to inform and have a vital voice because we believe that they are valued and valuable. And what they have to say needs to be heard. And so while we're going to have a great time, we're also going to have a time where we get to ask them questions about what they really think and what they believe needs to change and what they hope for. Although teachers of color are small in number in our district, they make an incredible difference. In 2018, researchers from Johns Hopkins and American University found that black students who only had one black teacher before the third grade were thirteen percent more likely to enroll in college. If they had two or three black teachers before they entered the third grade, they were thirty-two percent more likely to enroll in college. That is why that representation is so important. And it is the unspoken lessons that educate us the most. And our children of color need to see teachers of color. I wanted to thank Joe Finley of Castle Branch in Tech Mountain for being here tonight and for sponsoring our event. I also want to thank Ethan Welch of the Bridge Church for hosting our gathering. These men are always in my corner in championing education and equality in our city. There is room for, and opportunities for table hosts. And if anyone wants to give door prizes, we are all about spoiling these guys while we're together. And if you're a teacher, a teacher's assistant, or a principal, please contact us at communityconversationsnhcs@gmail.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ma'am, could you just repeat the date for me? The date and place?
Yes. So our Come to the Table Educator of Color Appreciation Dinner is going to be held at the Bridge Church at 6:00 PM, August the twentieth.
All right, that concludes our call to the audience. I'm afraid that we can't, previously, we had told somebody else that did not sign up in time that we were not, that they were not able to speak. So I'm afraid we must be consistent. I do apologize. You can register online or you can register before a meeting. I do understand, but I'm afraid we do have to be consistent. I do apologize. Is this time sensitive or can we push this to next meeting?
I can, we have our special ed director, Ms. Adams, right here. She can, if you've got information to share, she can be happy to sit with you and share.
If you want to hand the information to Ms. Adams, you know, I do apologize. We do have a procedure. What do you guys want to do?
Thank you.
Here's the problem that we have, is that we have a group of people that tag us every single time. We do not follow procedure. And you're putting us in a bad position.
I was unaware. I just said to call to the audience. I was unaware that there was guidelines about this.
That's fine. Go ahead and speak. I hope you all understand and I hope you all don't tag us next time when we do have a procedure that we do follow.
I understand that. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Lauren Cottle and I'm here to talk about Caesar Smart Schools. I am the mother of Willow Rose Maurice. She was diagnosed with epilepsy at five weeks old. And I'm not sure if everyone knows this, but one in twenty-six people have epilepsy. Half of those twenty-six are pediatric diagnosis. So there's our children. With the average classroom size at about the same number, I'm sure this is an issue that is relevant to every school. It is not only important, but it is life-saving for educators and all school employees to recognize the signs and symptoms of seizures of all kinds and how to respond if a child in their care has a seizure. How can we advocate legislation to make NC schools safer for not only children that have epilepsy? Because all it takes is for you to have a brain for you to have a seizure. And it does not discriminate race, income, nothing. Epilepsy may not be in your classroom today, but it can be knocking on your door tomorrow. Sam's Law was passed and signed by the governor this year. And unfortunately, Sam is a girl that's no longer with us because of a seizure that she had in the public school system. What can we do to have Caesar Smart Schools in North Carolina? And how can I help? Thank you for letting me speak. SamsLaw.org has a very nice video of the governor proudly signing this bill. And let's not have anyone lose their lives to have our schools safer for children with epilepsy. This is my daughter. She is three. She's on the beach. We try to keep a normal life. My daughter was having hundreds seizures a day, a day, and she is now down to maybe one or two a month. She is a miracle. But it's also the result of her getting the help that she needed at the time that she needed it. She goes, does outpatient EEGs a lot. And she starts school, or preschool, this fall. And there's not a school nurse, actually, at her preschool that she was assigned to in the transition process. And I'm very concerned that she won't be safe when she goes to school. And I feel like that we need to get on board with the Caesar Smart School Acts that are sweeping the nation. Illinois is involved, Minnesota's involved. North Carolina Foundation for Epilepsy has training available. Let's have it a requirement, if possible. Thank you very much for your time. I very much appreciate giving the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Item number six, we have no administrators. Okay. Item number seven, Head Start. Head Start Liaison Report. Mr. Bowyer?
We are beginning our new fiscal year and our new academic year. Two hundred and forty-seven of our applicants have already received letters welcoming them to pre-K in New Hanover County. So we thank the board very much for their continued support and generosity. If you take a look at Appendix B, whatever's next, I'm sorry. There we go. The, I'm sorry, the expenditure report. We've only spent nine, actually, eight percent of our employees' benefits because, again, we have just started over. And being summer, that's about all I have. I do want to bring Ms. Miles up this evening to discuss just a few things about what we have coming up. We are preparing for an audit. And I'll just have Ms. Miles take it from there and discuss what she has.
Good evening. In addition to our attachments, we have a closeout budget. And I would just like the board members to draw their attention to a hundred percent was spent and we closed out that budget. And like Mr. Bowyer stated, we started our new fiscal year. So we're right on track. And with saying that, it's a new year, a new five-year grant. So we are starting our review process. We've been notified on June the twenty-seventh that our event coordinator will soon be in contact with us for a Focus One review, which is really good news. Apparently, it's a more abbreviated starter point because of the success of the grant from the management of the board and what we're doing as a program with our families and children. So we will be receiving more information as that becomes available. We'll keep you abreast of that. Also included into your packets is our Head Start Governance Leadership and Oversight Capacity Screener. And that's a mouthful. So that is required, that we scan that in. And it states that we are certifying that we are implementing our Head Start performance standards. We've established a governing board, a policy council that has parents present to be decision-makers for our children and our families. We're abiding and implementing. All departments are taking place, such as your human resources, your finance. And all established systems are in place, composition of our boards, and we're following the regulations in that composition. So that is something our madam chairperson will be hopefully signing tonight, if there are any questions about that. Also, it states that we had governance training, if everybody remembers, in April. And then our policy council in October as well. Anything else, Mr. Boyer?
Do you require action on that item? Or just?
It's just a signature.
Signature. Thank you, Dr. Markley.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, information. Eye Station Implantation, Implementation Presentation Appendix F, Dr. LaShawn Smith. Oh, boy.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, I am standing before you this evening to share with you some information about the implementation of a new K-3 reading diagnostic in New Hanover. Additionally, this is the K-3 reading diagnostic that is going to be implemented across the state of North Carolina. So, on June 7th, which, you know, just by that date alone doesn't tell you that we've had a lot of leeway in planning for this. Um, the state superintendent announced by email that the K-3 reading diagnostic tool for the state would be Eye Station. This is a blended learning tool designed to monitor student progress. Um, and one thing that it purports is that there is minimal instruction disruption because this is a tool that is adaptive in terms of, of student learning, and it is computer-based. Um, there are specific requirements within the law for the tool, and so I've just highlighted a few of those here. Kindergarten first, second, and third grade students shall be assessed with a valid, reliable formative assessment tool. And that's exactly what this is. This is not a summative assessment tool. This is a formative tool, which in essence is designed to provide us with information to help drive and design instruction for some of our youngest learners. The legislation that is providing guidance for this is the Read to Achieve legislation. You may have heard us talk about that quite a bit because it impacts every kindergarten through third grade child in our district, and also is what, um, is, children have to demonstrate proficiency in grade three in order to be promoted to the, to the fourth grade, and also where we have derived our, our reading summer camps from. So, that is that legislation. Additionally, um, these assessments should be designed in such a way that they yield data that can be used with EVOs. And EVOs is a program that looks at children's performance over time to determine the effectiveness of what teachers are doing in the classroom. So, again, those are the requirements within the legislation, within the law, for this tool. Additionally, it is that this tool, as I said before, impact instructional time to the, to the least amount possible, giving teachers more time to instruct. And what has been offered or said about Eye Station is because we are assessing children using a computer-based program, all students are able to be assessed at the same time. Our previous system, which is called Reading, In-Class Reading, which our district has been engaged in that work probably for the last 10 to 12 years, required that teachers actually sit individually with students and would listen to students read individually, and they were assessed individually. This is very, very different as though, as children will be assessed as a part of a group. Um, and then also, there are certain requirements in terms of timeliness of reports and the types of reports that we receive as a result, as the testing. What you have now in front of you, sorry about that, are the components of the program. And so, in the grades K-3, you have the early reading assessments. And also, they will assess oral reading fluency, fluency. Teachers will have access to lessons. These are teacher-directed lessons. But even though this is a computer-based program, the portion that the state affords to districts is not the interactive lessons. It is the printed teacher lessons, but teachers will have access to that. And then also, children will have access or practice for home use as, as well. There will be a parent portal that parents can access and be able to take a look at their, their students' performances as well. There's individual student reporting, as well as uh, school reporting, district reporting, state-level reports, and as I said, the parent portal. With that, in these assessments, for our students at the lowest level, the pre-kindergarten, which we are not currently using this assessment for pre-kindergarten students, but it is available to us. They assess listening comprehension, letter knowledge, vocabulary. But then for kindergarten through first grade, listening comprehension, phonemic awareness, letter knowledge, again, vocabulary. Um, and then in the older grades, again, vocabulary. And then we move into comprehension, spelling, and connected fluency. Um, the assessment windows, which are similar to the assessment windows that we currently have with our reading, our previous reading diagnostic, are September, January for our traditional schools. Excuse me, September for our beginning of the year for traditional, middle of the year, January for our traditional schools. And then with our year-round schools, we'll actually begin that in December. One thing that has occurred as a result of this, there's been a lot of pushback across the state in terms of this implementation because it came very, very quickly. And again, unfortunately, what we know about the program, we know as a result of not having seen the program, but because of webinars. We, even at this point with our schools beginning next week, we don't even yet have access. Um, we've had folks who've been able to attend online webinars, and we've had a few folks who've attended face-to-face training. So, what has happened as a result of that is they have pushed back implementation in terms of the accountability associated with this program for about six months. But we, as a district, have decided that we're going to go ahead and train our teachers now so that our teachers can be as familiar as possible with the program in and of itself before we're holding them accountable to the outcomes that come as a result of, of the, of the data. So, that's why the assessment windows are a little bit different for our, our year-round. So, again, I, what you've got on the screen now is our implementation plan. We, as you know, we start school next Wednesday for year-round, and so we've asked those folks to identify in their schools their campus leader for Eye Station. And we've had our technology department take a look, well, actually, again, participate in an online webinar in regards to the technical training associated with this program. For the month of July, we've asked our traditional schools to identify who's going to be that point of contact at their school. And um, we are now beginning that training for our year-round folks. But again, unfortunately, it's somewhat of a challenge, given that we have yet to get access. I, based on the information that's been shared with me, we should have access sometime this week. But um, again, if we had a little bit of, I guess, better control or input into the process, we would have wanted to do this with much more lead time than what's been made available to us. Um, we've directed other principals and other instructional staff that if they have the opportunity to participate in the Get to Know You webinars, to take advantage of that. In August, actually, will be the first time that our traditional schools will be able to participate in the face-to-face training. But luckily, that's going to be held in Wilmington, so that's very little cost to us as a district. And that's scheduled for, for August 8th. There are, the, the organization or the company has said that they will make available to us recorded podcasts that once they are, the webinars are complete, then they will make those available, and teachers can engage in self-paced training. Um, not typically our first choice in how to deliver professional development to our teachers, but again, this is coming to us as a decision that was made by the state, not one that was made local within the district. Um, we've had quite a few questions from teachers. The biggest question, I think, is how can we assess oral reading fluency? Teachers I've had communication with and principals are really concerned that we're not going to be listening to children when we're assessing their ability to read. And what the Eye Station program offers to us is that they will record children, and then teachers will be able to go individually into the system and play that back. Again, um, we're not sure on the quality of the recording or the quality of the playback, and we've not been able to test it simply because we don't have access at this point. But this is what has, has been explained to us from the, from the Eye Station folks who've, who've shared this information. When will it be get, available? Again, our year-round start in just a little bit more than a week, and they're saying it will be this month. My understanding, it's supposed to actually be today, although I've not gotten any official notification. I'll check first thing tomorrow morning to see if our schools have access. We've got a lot of concerns, but again, this was a decision that was made far outside of, of, of our decision-making abilities there. Um, and then another question that I've heard from quite a few folks, how will this impact current Read to Achieve practices? Um, we've been implementing Read to Achieve, I think now for about four to five years. We have our summer camps, we have our assessment. Teachers are very familiar with those practices. We've got a lot of resources that are available to support teachers in understanding, building capacity around that. And what we've got in response to this question is that the Department of Public Instruction is in the process of revamping all of those tools and revamping all of that guidance. So, it's not even available to us at this, at this time either. Um, and we also do still have some questions about the impact on our MTSS processes as well. I, I want to remain very positive in this, but from our perspective, it seems like it was a, a pretty hasty decision. And um, it was not one that was made with the input of folks that, that work within our district. Um, so, I am glad to attempt to answer any questions that you may have in regards to this. And, and again, I've not seen the program. I've only participated in the webinars, I've only looked at the PowerPoint. Um, I've only seen the reports as a screen capture. But I'm hopeful that at least by tomorrow, we will have access as a district.
Dr. Smith, with the amount of pushback that this has received across the state, is there any way there could be a reversal in this decision?
Um, what I would say to you is, I, that is what led to the six months. And what the six months does, I mean, it, you, you would think that it, that really is a really, really good thing. Um, but what it does is it just removes the accountability for the teacher for six months. And if we're going to train teachers, one of the teachers is actually going to probably be a little less stressed, have a little more time. It's probably going to be in the beginning of the year as opposed to six months in. I say, okay, with everything else you're doing, let's do this. And then also, we need some data on how our children are doing in terms of reading. We prefer, if that data is good data, um, but um, you know, we'll work with whatever we have. In, in terms of likelihood that this is going to go away, I know that there are, um, that, I believe, I don't want, I, there's um, a lawsuit perhaps by another vendor against the decision that was made. But I don't know that, that this is going to go away. And, and if it does, I don't know that we're in a position to go in a different direction without children being hurt in the process. And when I say being hurt in the process, I'm talking specifically about missing out on that opportunity for their classroom teacher to understand what their early learning, reading needs are.
Thank you.
Yes.
Has Eye Station been used in any other state? Do you have data on?
So, based on the research that I've done, Eye Station has been used only in one district in North Carolina, and it's been used in a multitude of charter schools, um, which typically charter schools, you know, are not going to be as large as, you know, as largest school districts like New Hanover County Schools. I don't know of any large district that has used Eye Station. And when I was Director of K-12 Instruction, we did look at this product, and we chose to go in a different direction.
So, both working groups chose another tool, and we have no real data on Eye Station, and we're going to be using Eye Station. Good.
Eye Station was actually developed in Texas, correct?
I'm not exactly sure where it originated. I know it's a much smaller company, a less robust company. Um, the product in and of itself, what I've seen is definitely less robust, but I'm not sure where they developed.
But it's, it's been used other places, not in...
Yes, yes, yes.
Outside of North Carolina it's been used to.
And so, when they say the guidebooks are date to determine, they just have no clue when they're going to get the guidebooks for certain programs. That's, that's discouraging. But I want to say, we're talking about pushback. I am proud of those teachers who wrote to the board and wrote to the state superintendent in a very professional way. They were passionate about what we really need for our children. But I guess they weren't heard, but we heard them.
Yeah. Our, our teachers I've spoken to and communicated with, as well as principals, are really, really concerned that teachers are not going to be listening to children to determine the quality of their, their reading. I think that is just really hard for, for folks. Um, and you know, we use adaptive learning in our classrooms now, but it is not the primary source of instruction, nor is it the primary source of assessment for formative assessment.
Is there a way to incorporate still that one-to-one with the teacher and student? And still use this program? Or is that what they're going to have to do?
Well, they are definitely going to, going to have to do that. Um, I, you know, I, I, I dare say I don't think there's going to be a teacher who is going to be completely satisfied in letting a computer tell him or her how well their children are reading. Um, I think it's just going to really make that process much, much more cumbersome for the classroom teacher.
And there are some challenges technology-wise. Don, you want to speak to those, just in terms of devices and numbers and?
Well, if, you know, they say you could do the whole class in 30 minutes. We don't have the devices. We don't have, you know, we're not one-to-one in all of our schools, so that would be an issue. Um, you've also got kids talking into, sitting next to other kids. You know, you're talking about elementary kids, how quiet they are, the, the picking up of the sound. We might have to be buying, you know, headphones with a microphone on it, which kids aren't used to really wearing and talking into, and it's, it's going to be very fun. And I did get the email and tried to log in, it did my account, but it told me my account's not active. So, I can log in, but it's not active.
Okay, I didn't get the email.
I got mine, did I? Dr. Jethro may have gotten it. Because I think us three got it.
I'll check with her, thank you.
Can't get anywhere.
Game's not over until the whole nine innings have been played, so keep calling. Keep, keep sending those emails. If you sent them to us, send them again. Forward them, please. You said this has not been used in another state?
No, it has definitely been used in other states. I don't know of any district in North Carolina that's using it large scale, besides one. And then my understanding is the school systems that are using this are primarily charter school system. So, you know, either an individual school, or maybe, um, much smaller scale than what our district is.
Yeah, we just have limited information, and this only came out a month ago, so...
And Mr. Boyer, in terms of timing, to, it, there's a requirement in the law to, to do this assessment. And they've chosen this company, we actually take an act of the legislature to stop this process at this point. And of course, legislatures, I mean, there's no bills coming through that would, that could, that could do this. Several associations, large district which we belong to, school administrators and others, have had conversations with Department of Public Instruction, but we don't, unfortunately, don't see any, any movement other than this six-month delay.
Well, would the best be thing to say then is contact your legislature to maybe see if they can influence DPI and what's going on?
That's what I was suggesting. But at least it wasn't...
That's about it.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the information. Thank you very much for the information.
Yes, you're more than welcome.
All right, moving on to item B, elementary and middle school redistricting, appendix G, Eddie Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board hired Cropper GIS Consulting to manage the elementary and middle school redistricting process, and tonight Matt Cropper is here. This will be a kind of a kickoff presentation. Tonight, he is going to go over and review the redistricting process and the timeline that has been adopted. Mr. Cropper?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Markley, and members of the public. Thank you all for being here, and I appreciate the opportunity. We're excited to be here, we're kicking off this redistricting study. And as Mr. Anderson said here, just to give you an overview of the presentation and also inform the public on how they can participate in this process that's going to be starting tomorrow. So a little about who we are. I have introduced myself to you before, but we are Cropper GIS Consulting, based out of Ohio, but we do this kind of work all over the country. Redistricting is our specialty, and we have done this work in a lot of places, from 2,000, 200,000 students currently working in Wayne County, North Carolina, also recently finished a project in Cabarrus County and Union County, in addition to a lot of other places in the U.S. So we bring a lot of experience in this and as an outside third party and an objective point of view to help facilitate this process, and we're excited and honored to be working with you and the community. As I said, we've worked with districts all over, and so we bring a lot of perspectives on what has and what hasn't worked as it relates to the process. And, you know, redistricting is all about adapting to the crowd and to the community and to the needs of the committee and things like that. And so we're very good at doing that, and we're really looking forward to working with the public and this committee as we go through this process. So why are we doing this and what's driving the need to look at redistricting? The school district is beginning a process for elementary and middle schools only. We're focusing on elementary and middle boundaries. And what's driving the process is to populate the new Porter's Neck Elementary School, which opens in the 2020-21 school year. We're also looking at accounting for increased building capacity with the replacement of Blair and College Park Elementary Schools, so accounting for that. And then efficiently utilizing space and looking not only at where students are now, but also be mindful of future growth potential and making sure that we are balancing utilization and making things equitable in terms of capacity. And we're focusing on guiding principles that the school board has established, and I'm going to talk about those in a minute. And we're expected to, the plan or the recommendation is expected to happen by the end of this year, and it's anticipated to be implemented by the fall of 2020, so the 2020-21 school year. So the objectives of this are to basically engage a group, a committee, but then also extend that to a larger community, to the community as a whole, and really empower people with the ability to follow the process from start to finish and be able to provide input at any point during the process. And again, focusing on developing a redistricting plan or recommendation that focuses on the guiding principles and that best adheres to the guiding principles as a whole. So we were hired to develop materials to help support this process, to facilitate the work as an outside third party, to empower the community through this process and give them the ability to provide input, participate in the process from start to finish, and then to leverage our expertise. I want to talk about the guiding principles. So these are basically the rules that we follow when we're looking at evaluating whether a line should move one way or the other. The best plan is going to be one that touches on these guiding principles as best as possible. I've done this for 20 years, and no plan is ever going to be perfect. There's things that we can't control, location of students, location of schools, how many seats are available, where the growth is occurring, and all of the different nuances that exist in different communities. And so, but the best plan is going to be one that touches on these criteria and adheres to these criteria as a whole as best as possible. So these are to balance school facility utilization. So make sure that there's equitable amount of space inside the schools and with the plan, provide relief to the schools that need it the most. You guys don't have a whole lot of space in this county, and so, you know, the utilization numbers, especially with the K-3 class size reduction, things that are happening in the state, you're looking at overutilization just as starting out the gate at the elementary level particularly. And so, you know, we're looking at providing relief to schools that have the greatest need and then helping to share the, you know, basically balanced utilization, make sure it's equitable so schools have a similar amount of students in the buildings. Be mindful of future growth and not only looking at where students are now, but we have our demographer, Dr. McKibben, working with us on this process, and he's developed population enrollment forecasts for this district. And so he's also being mindful and helping to evaluate options as they are developed, looking at close proximity, so trying to assign students as close to their home as possible. And that's something that you'll see that a lot of these guiding principles do have, they sometimes oppose each other. And sometimes if you focus only on one element of the criteria or the guiding principles, you deviate further from the others. So that's why it's important to understand that there's not always going to be a case where every student can go to the closest school to them, because doing so would violate some of the other guiding principles. Clear feeder patterns and continuity, so not only looking at an elementary zone, a redistricting plan, and a middle school redistricting plan, but looking at how they coincide with each other and following the elementary and middle school progression and seeing how much of an elementary school is going to a middle school and what percentage of an elementary school is going. Trying to avoid small splits, so like a 5% of a school going to one school and 95% going to another, that's something you want to try to avoid. And so keeping in mind kids, making friends at elementary level, say when they go to the middle school, that's a scary time, so they can have familiar faces if they go to the next level. So trying to have more of a balanced split if you have to split a school from elementary to middle school. And then we're also looking at middle to high school feeder pattern progression here as well, although we're not, there's no expectation that high school boundaries will be modified as part of this project. Minimize the impact on students. So we will be calculating how many students are impacted in any option, and so that's something that we will be sharing and reporting so that we can understand the impact, the overall impact, especially as it relates from option to option. And consider economic, cultural, and ethnic diversity, so looking at what the current demographics of the schools are, and if we can, try to improve the demographic diversity of the schools. Again, it goes back to trying to achieve a plan, a recommendation, that best adheres to all these criteria. If we focus on one of these criteria or guiding principles, we start to really get far away from the others. So knowing that nothing's going to be perfect, but the best plan and recommendation that we bring forward to you at the end of this year will be one that we feel, that this committee feels best adheres to these criteria or guiding principles as a whole. So a little bit of a background on the phases of the project. We've been collecting data, we've been working on that for the past several months, putting all that data into the mapping system, and then developing some options for a starting point, and we're meeting with the committee, the first meeting is tomorrow here at 3:30, and the public is welcome to come as observers for that. And we'll be sharing two options that we have generated that are in draft form to kickstart the conversation, knowing that those options will be modified and certainly there will be other options developed through the course of this study. And then, as I said, that once the options have been developed in preparation for the first committee meeting, and today is the first kickoff to the meeting, to the process, and we'll be working with the public and the committee from here on out, all the way through the end of this year. Collected information from all different parties, the school district gave us a lot of information on students, which we've mapped out. We know where all the, we can know where all the students live and how many kids live in any street or neighborhood or attendance boundary, and boundary information, enrollment data. The city and county has given us, has a good resource for information on property lines and maps of other things like roads and rivers and other features and things like that that need to be factored in. We've put all this information into our mapping system so that we can be as accurate and efficient as possible and be able to understand if you move a student or move an area, how many students is it going to impact and make sure that we're confident in that calculation and that our estimates come to fruition as planned. So we have a series of what we call planning blocks, and these are building blocks for redistricting. Think of them as pieces of a puzzle that we work with to help figure if an area moves, it moves together or it stays together. So these planning blocks is what we have for a starting point, but one of the things to note is that if we feel, or the committee or the public, or somebody feels that a planning block is violating any of our guiding principles, say if we're splitting a community, a neighborhood down a residential street, we can modify these planning blocks and make changes to them to make sure that we're adhering and doing our job as good as possible. You'll notice there's planning block ID numbers on the maps. The planning block ID is something that community members, that once they start to learn what's going on and how they may be impacted or not, they'll start identifying which planning block number they live in. So well, if somebody says, I live in planning block 100, that helps the committee and myself and everybody who's involved understand exactly what area they're talking about. And with each planning block is a count of number of students that live inside the planning block, and that helps people understand, well, why wouldn't you move this area instead of this area? But they can go and look at this data and see, okay, well, then maybe there's 100 students in this planning block, but maybe 20 over here, and that may provide some rationale on why we can or can't make a boundary change that may be desired by somebody in the community. We've developed a background report that we'll be handing out to the committee. All this information will be available online starting tomorrow, and the public is welcome to download and preview and download any of the materials that are shared with the committee. We have nothing to hide, and we welcome the public in this process. This is, this only gets better with the public's participation and the public's involvement. So it's very important that the public is aware and that they're involved, and we really encourage that. But this background report provides a lot of background information, enrollment of schools, and a lot of information about the boundaries and maps and things that people can understand if they want to know what's the capacity of the school, what's the enrollment of this building. They don't have to speculate. They can refer to this document, and it keeps the message consistent and accurate, and it avoids speculation and people assuming something that starts to go like a grapevine and starts to snowball into a larger rumor. We have an online map, it's croppermap.com/nhcs, and this is an interactive map that tomorrow we will have the options on there, and the public can look at this, and we'll also have computers for the committee members so that they can look at the map. And this helps you really dive in and zoom in on the map and see features that you probably may not be able to see in a large plot map. It really gives you a lot of ability to really get close to the map and understand what's on the ground. And it's, I find it to be an invaluable resource when we're working on this, especially as we drive across the county and study the areas as we work through the redistricting. But this is something that's very popular from the public and informs people. Right now, you can go on there and there shouldn't, there are not any options on there, just the current boundaries, but tomorrow you'd be able to turn on and off options one and two and look at those as well. And so that's something that can be a good resource for people. We create draft options to start. It's important to note that the word draft is very important. These are just starting points. People, it's going to elicit anxiety in the public. When you start working with boundaries and moving areas and communities, it's very common for people to get upset and anxious about moving. But what's most important is to understand and to tell the public that these are all draft, nothing is final until it is approved by you as a school board. So, and these are subject to change, and we do expect that these options are looked at, evaluated, and that the committee starts to make changes to these. Maybe they may scrap them, they may like components of one or the other and make hybrid options, but basically just a starting point for the committee to start looking at what could happen and what would the resulting numbers be, and then really help to drive the discussion and look at creating new options and developing new scenarios. But as I said, the committee can, really has the choice to disregard the options, these draft options. They're basically things that we have created, myself and Dr. McKibben, to, as a starting point, to kickstart the process. And these were developed with the guiding principles in mind, focus on those guiding principles as a whole as we worked through these, these beginning options. But the most important factor in this and the most of the key to success of a redistricting study is to make sure that all lines of communication are open and that it's an open and transparent process. We have nothing to hide, we welcome the public, they're welcome to come observe these meetings. They can't participate at the committee meetings, but they can come, and it's very common that I'll see the committee members will bring, will print off the materials, and they'll start building their own binders that we give committee members. And so we do, we are listening to the public, and we want to hear what they say, and there are some ways, methods that they can participate and communicate to us as well, which I'll talk about here. We have an 18-person committee, that's including myself, you, I think it's 17 members total, but myself is more of a sort of an outside, I'm not a, I don't vote on anything, I'm really more of just an outside third party, trying to keep you guys, the committee focused on their tasks, make sure that emotion doesn't get, start getting involved in this process, focusing on, focus on data and with a focus of developing a plan that best adheres to the objectives and principles. This committee was established by the Board and consists of staff, school board, and also community. Volunteer members of the public will be serving on this. But one of the things to note is it always, we had 63 applicants, I think it was, when we worked through this, and we selected three members to serve on this committee. But we always hear, well, why wasn't I on the committee? You know, you don't have a representative for my school or my community, I'm not here, I don't have, my community doesn't have a voice. But what's most important with this committee is I guide this committee and orient them that the focus is not to represent your school or your neighborhood or your student, but basically to focus on developing a plan that best meets the needs of all children in this county. The focus is on all children and not any particular student or school or area. So it's, you know, the committee is, does a good job with that, and it's important to note that the committee is just one level of this process in engaging the public. We're working with this committee to help develop options, but we have many methods for the public to participate. There is a general feedback form on our redistricting page that any member of the public can go online and provide input, they can attend these meetings, and I'm always there after the meeting to talk to any member of the public if they got questions for me, they want to share their concerns. These are things that I take in, and I take them very seriously, and I listen to what's being done, and I communicate that to this, to committee as a whole. And so if, just because an applicant didn't make it on the committee doesn't mean that they can't participate in this process and they can't provide valuable input just as valuable as members of this committee. And so I look forward to hearing from the public and also working with this committee on this process. So we're at the beginning of this process, the public information session, we're working through three meetings. First meeting with the committee starts tomorrow at 3:30, it's going to be here, and the focus of the first three meetings is just to develop some options, a series of options that we can share with the public in September. So we'll be working toward, the focus is to develop maybe two to three, depending on what the committee feels is appropriate, to share with the public coming in September. And then we'll be surveying the public at that point and then working back with the committee two more times to finalize a recommendation, which is anticipated to occur in December of this year. That recommendation will be presented to you in December. So how can members of the public participate? So we have developed, the school district has a webpage dedicated to redistricting, so if you go to the New Hanover County Schools webpage, there's a landing page for this. We are also managing a page that has all the materials, links to all the materials that you can download. This presentation that I'm giving you right now is available on there right now, and so that people can start participating. It's nhcsredistricting.com, but the district's webpage links to this page as well. There on that page, the page that we're managing, there's a general feedback form, so any member of the public can go on there and provide comments, and those comments are read and studied by me on a continual basis, and I also share that with the committee, and then we'll also share with the general public as a whole so that people understand what members of the public are saying and what input is being provided across the county. We have a public input session that's scheduled for September 17th, and that's when we're going to be taking some draft options to the public to share, get some thoughts from them. It'll be sort of a gallery walk format. I'll do a presentation kind of like this, directed to the public, and then we'll have maps, copies of the maps on either taped to walls or on easels, and invite the public to come look at the maps. Committee members will be standing around them, answering questions and talking with the public and encouraging them to fill out an online survey that we will be collecting information and reporting and studying their additional comments. So that's all I have, and in terms of a kickoff in this process, I'm really honored to be working on this and excited to be working with New Hanover County and the public on this process, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Mr. Wartman, as Chair of the committee, would you like to say anything?
Mr. Wortman, as chair of the committee, would you like to say anything? Or anybody else from the committee?
I would say I think the most important thing that Matt talked about is making sure the public knows that, you know, we have a meeting at 3:30 tomorrow. We want the public there. We want the public to listen. And also, after the fact, you know, if the public has questions, just because they can't be involved in the actual committee discussion, you're available afterwards. So talk to you afterwards, come up with questions.
Sure.
And we'll develop something that everyone has an opportunity to talk about.
Yes, sir. And I always encourage, I love talking with the public, but I always encourage them to fill out the feedback, put their comments on the feedback so that the whole committee can benefit from the conversation that I may have with one committee, community member. But yes, you're absolutely right.
Can you explain how you came up with a ranking system or how you narrowed down the 63 candidates that we then discussed as a committee group?
Yes, sir. Yeah, absolutely. So we opened the door or the window for the application process. And then we gave that some time to allow the public to apply for the process. Once that window closed, we collected that information and we mapped out all the committee members so that we could see where the committee members lived. It's important to have some geographic distribution on the community and parent representatives that we have on this committee. So that was one component of it, making sure that all two or three of these members weren't coming from the same subdivision or area. So of the three, there is one who lives in the northern part of the county, one who lives in the center part, central city, and then one who lives south of the county, in the southern part of the county. And on top of that, we evaluated the applications. I reviewed, studied the applications and looked at all of them and reviewed them. I'm looking for objectivity in their responses. I'm looking for people who aren't coming in with preconceived agendas or already, you know, without, you know, thinking holistically as a group, thinking, already have a plan in place that they're not going to budge. You know, I'm looking for people, like I mentioned before, this plan is focused on what's best for all children in this county. And I was looking for that and the thoughtfulness of the application to make sure that I understand that and that these people would share the same values and focusing on the needs of all children in the county. I provided a short list to, I narrowed it down from 63 to about eight people and then went through the process of evaluating those and looking at them to bring it down to three. It was not an easy process. I think that, you know, what you'll see is that of the applicants, all 63 applicants, I mean, I'd say that almost all of them were very well qualified to serve on the committee. It's never easy to select a committee from a batch, a large batch of applicants. And so people were not selected, the people who did not, who were not selected, they weren't not selected because they weren't qualified. It was just because we could select three only and we looked for three people with geographic distribution in the county to make sure that they're not there to represent an area or a school. They are here to basically tell us what it's like, what traffic is like in the area of the county they live in and they shop and they work in and where, how the community is in the area and where they maybe see students walking to school and bottlenecks in traffic. That kind of perspective is really what we're looking at from these committee members.
I've gotten a lot of feedback already surrounding and centering on the question of race in this process and why the decision was made and how the decision was made to make race a non-factor. We didn't know the race. And I think it'd be important if you discussed that and explained that and talked a little bit about why none of those three people that we were selecting from the community were people of color.
Well, we, like you said, we don't ask what the race is of the candidate, of the applicant. And so we didn't know what the racial composition was of the candidate, who the candidates who were selected. We were focused more on where they live and what areas that they, you know, that they work and shop and live in and, you know, the areas surrounding where they live. And so it wasn't done intentionally or by any means. And again, what I'd say is that I really feel that these people who were selected, these committee members, the volunteers who were selected, through the way that their applications, they demonstrated objectivity and I'm just confident that they will focus on what's best for all children regardless of race, income, and ethnicity. So I really feel strongly about that. And, you know, and I really feel like this group, regardless of the race, racial composition of the group, that they will focus on the needs of all children regardless of that.
I would also say that the board members on the committee picked those three community members and those board members were unanimous in those three, correct?
That's right. Yes, sir. The board members did select the three committee members and there was no, it was consensus on that, on the selection. Yes, sir.
Mr. Cropper, you've done this for a very long time and you've worked in a lot of different places. Has race never been discussed when you are selecting these committee members? Because I know in this town, it's important, it's an important conversation. And is that just not the experience that you've had? I'm curious. I default to a lot, you've got great things to say and I understand a lot of the rationale about objectivity. But that is an important conversation here when our schools look the way that they do today.
Yes, ma'am. It's something that we look for, we never ask the race of the applicant. And all the times that we have facilitated the application process, we don't ask for the racial composition of a committee member.
And no county has ever pushed back on that? Or asked for it?
We have not, I have not had, we haven't had an issue with the committee. But, you know, every district is different in how committees are put together and things like that. But, you know, it wasn't easy to selecting three out of the 63 in there. But really what we're looking at was somebody who lives in the city, somebody who lives in the south, and someone who lives in the north so that we have those perspectives from all different parts of the community. You know, it has not been, it has not been an issue and I don't anticipate it being an issue here. Like I said, this committee, this committee is one part of this process. So the public is welcome, they're welcome to observe and participate and give us feedback. And their voice is just as powerful as a member of the committee as it relates to giving us input. And so, you know, I would say that I'm confident that the way that we structure the process and the openness and transparency of the process, it doesn't exclude anybody and anybody can participate and give us input. And we do listen to that.
I would just like to publicly say I hope the committee reevaluates the selections, maybe not necessarily, maybe adding an additional selection for a person of color.
And I agree. I agree. No, I think it's real important that in the future, because the purpose of having a race listed on an application or something like this is to protect people too, not just to identify them, but also to protect them. And that's a given. I asked that question 30, 40 years ago. Why do you have race on there? So that would be an important thing that you consider in the future. And also, anybody on the board here, when they were looking at the applications, to me, that would have screamed out also. So I think we all need to be more aware of our community and in your future, also the people that you're presenting, you know, applications to so that they do have the opportunity to have that as a big consideration in our community.
Could it not have turned out after the committee was picked that it could have been three African-Americans?
It's very possible. I mean, it is possible. There were applicants, people applied from all over the county. And so, you know, there were applicants coming from all different communities. And so, you know, that is, it is possible. We didn't, you know, didn't ask the race of the applicant. And so that was, we were focusing more on geographic distribution and also the objectivity in their answers and the thoughtfulness of the responses. Sir.
I'm hopeful that we've, unfortunately, when we're doing this redistricting process, the goal of the redistricting process, and we as a board met, we came up with different ideas of what we thought were important. I hope we can get to that step of redistricting, looking at our guiding principles and come up with a plan that is good for all students, whether it be the student that lives in town or the students that lives in Wrightsville Beach, Porter's Net, Carolina Beach. And I hope that because the public is going to be involved and can be involved and can attend meetings and talk to you, talk to committee members, that the public as a whole is able to see this as a process that we're doing good for the kids here. And I'm a little concerned that we're getting off on the wrong foot because now we're looking at redistricting as a race thing again. And that's, I think, what we're trying to get away from. We're trying to develop plans, because there's a bunch of principles, but one of them is developing diverse schools. So if we go into this process already worried about race, it's going to detract from, I think, what we're trying to do. So I would encourage the public to get out there, attend the meetings, talk to you, talk to the committee members. Because the reason why we involved you, I believe, is so because you have the experience in getting involved with the public, they can be more involved in the process.
I hope so.
So let's see how the process goes instead of already starting kind of on the wrong foot.
Yeah, we're taking a proactive approach with this process in that...
So I'm excited about who we have on the board and hopefully the public will be involved in this.
Sir. And we do all, very often here, you know, the public is engaged in the way, when we do this work. And I would just encourage the public to participate, follow the process, and look at the maps that are being generated and tell us what they think about them. If they don't like the map, tell us why. But I always tell the public, give us your feedback as it relates to the guiding principles. Because that's what the committee is focused on doing, is developing a plan that best adheres to those guiding principles as a whole.
Representation matters. Representation matters. Representation matters. I appreciate your voice, but we do have a visitor here and I would appreciate being respectful of him. So I would ask that the committee take this up tomorrow at their meeting and the public can speak then, okay? But let's be respectful of the person who's leading this process, okay? Thank you.
I could say the public is, at the committee meetings, the focus of the committee meetings is to work with the committee. The public can observe, but we don't have a public speaking opportunity for the committee built into that. We have, you know, two hours of time to work with the committee and the focus is working with the committee. But, you know, the public is welcome to watch and observe.
Is the feedback form live?
The feedback form is live, yes, ma'am. Anybody can go on there and participate and provide input. And I certainly expect to see input from the public.
I encourage everyone here that feels that this committee should look different or if you feel that there's representation that is missing, please fill out that feedback form so that it can be accepted by the meeting tomorrow. And that is something that the committee can discuss. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, Equity Work Group, Dr. LaShawn Smith.
Good evening. Now on topic I can talk about that I know a little bit more about and definitely feel a lot more comfortable with. I'd like to, once the presentation comes up, I'd like to provide you with just an update on the work around equity inclusion in our district. We have taken what we believe is an intentional approach through the lens of inclusion with our work around equity. We have three primary drivers in this work, specifically the work of the Equity Work Group, also professional development and training for teachers and principals and other folks who work directly with children in our schools. And then also, which is very important, is that community connection. So specifically, what we've done around professional development and training for principals, we've provided them with that implicit bias training because we know that implicit bias is any unconscious, unconsciously held set of associations about a particular group. And this focus has been on building awareness for principals and also providing them with the tools to combat and confront the impact of implicit bias in the work that they do in their schools. We also are continuing this work through the use of two specific book studies. And we are working specifically with a consultant to build capacity in our principals so that they can lead this work in a very informed way in their schools. And then finally, we are providing them with race equity training opportunities. But again, these are training opportunities. We want to make sure that we're building, again, capacity with our principals so that they can support this work in their schools. Training is also, at this time, being designed specifically for teachers to address bias as well, to ensure that they, and also to ensure that they have a curriculum that they are delivering to students that is responsive to the children that are in their classroom. And then finally, around the work of the community support, we're creating inclusive opportunities for community members to be participatory in this work. We've had, and I wanted to see if they were still here, I think they've gone, but we actually had members who were present in the audience today that participated in our groundwater training. We've got some folks who are also here a little while ago that we've invited to our upcoming trainings as well. We want to make sure that we're doing this, again, in an intentional way so it's going to be sustained in the community and that the focus is on inclusion. Because we know that with implicit bias, there's the opportunity for decisions to be made just simply because of how folks present themselves. And we want to make sure that we are addressing that for all children in our district. I'm not going to make a comment and my feelings are hurt. All right. Additionally, specific to the Equity Work Group, we've expanded that membership. Our focus is on different backgrounds and experiences of the people that are in that community or in that work group. And we want to make sure that the representation is inclusive. We want to make sure that all the student groups that are in our school community are represented on that work group so that they can advocate very actively from a very knowledgeable perspective for those particular student groups. And we're still open and taking nominations on membership as well. Additionally, in terms of the work, we designed the work in such a way that we believe that it's going to be sustaining. We don't want this to be one and done. We don't want to overwhelm our teachers. We don't want our teachers to feel that we are saying to them that they're not doing a good job with our children. We simply want to provide our principals and our teachers with tools so that they can do an even better job with our children in terms of meeting them where they are. We have a Google site that will have tons of resources specific for schools and teachers and principals that we're releasing on the 15th of this month. And we're going to continue as a part of our work with the work group to update that to make sure that's available to our folks as well. And then finally, the board committee, once it launches, we see our work in connection to that, really just primarily focusing on a policy and helping to inform policy within the district. And then finally, the community connection. So you see that New Hanover County Schools in and of itself really is nested within the community. We understand that we exist within that ecosystem. So it is going to be very important to be a part of the community, to make sure we've got that strong community connection. So with that, we are seeking representation from the community on the board committee once that launches. We are also launching a series of race equity discussion conversations within the community which are completely optional for folks who have been Phase 1 trained. That's the only requirement there. And then with our groundwater trainings, we are scheduling one now. It's scheduled for August 8th. We are, again, looking to have 55 members from our school system to be a part of that and at least 20 members from our community. And right now, I think we've got about... got about fourteen different organizations that we're going to invite, from Cape Fear Community College, UNCW, the Sheriff's Department, New Hanover County Government, the City of Wilmington, just various groups and organizations, NAACP, to be a part of that as well. So, we want to make sure that we build this out in such a way that it will be sustained for the long term. So, I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
When will we be ready to make it a board-level committee? Do you think August would be a good target date?
I think that would be perfect.
Okay.
I think that would be perfect. We are ready to connect and support the board committee in any way that they need us to. We've already completed the application, we're in the process of breaking out a small subgroup of our work group to work specifically on the mission statement. We've got three draft mission statements, but we want to make sure that we can provide to the board committee a strong suggestion, and then for them to choose what their mission statement will be. But we're very excited about supporting the board committee.
Okay, great. After the conversation we just had with the redistricting committee, I don't know if it's a legal question, that can race be included on the application for the community committee?
It is.
Because I feel that's important for this one.
It is. We actually asked quite a few questions. And part of that, and we have really an optional section on the application, and I'm definitely glad to share that with folks ahead of time. And we do ask race, we actually ask age and a grade span, because we, well, not a grade span, that's me talking, and an age span, and for that is, we want to make sure that the folks who are coming forth are across the continuum. So, we do ask quite a few questions, but those are optional.
Someone that's interested in being a part of the committee, what would be important for them to care about, or be invested in?
So, we also have designed the application, so if there's someone who has a resume that they can attach, they can, but it's not a requirement. So, what I would say is that they have a passion for this work, and a genuine interest in seeing that we become more inclusive in what's occurring in our district, for all groups of young people.
Thank you.
And since it becomes a board committee, what the board's looking for in that committee becomes important as well. I mean, we have individual ideas around that, but as a board committee, it needs to take some leadership from where the board wants that committee to go.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have been asked to take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
We will do that at this time. Thank you.
Come in.